Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order with roll call.
Howser?
Here.
Kent?
Here.
Mead? Here. Mankie?
Here.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Young?
Here.
You have a call?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the district mission and vision.
Our district mission is to teach all and reach all. Our district vision is that Urbandale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And UCSD's school board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocol.
Thank you, sir. And straight into the superintendent's report.
Okay, so first tonight I'd like to introduce a new segment that a wise board member suggested and I thought it was a great idea. Of course, we have to capitalize on the U, so we're calling this the more you know. This is gonna be an opportunity each meeting should there be topics where there might be some misperceptions or some misinformation out there that's not necessarily an agenda item that I want to officially ask the board to do anything about, but it's an opportunity to explain to you and the community to clarify. Tonight I have two topics that I would like to clarify. One of them is around open enrollment. We've had a number of conversations from the public around open enrollment and the suggestion to reduce the amount of open enrollment we have to possibly arrive at a different state for some of our other activities. And I just wanted to clarify, open enrollment is where a parent or guardian who resides in an Iowa district has the ability to enroll their child in a different district than what they reside in. This is all dictated by Iowa code and it has been amended over the years. You remember a couple of years ago, they extended the deadline for Des Moines students. And then the next year, they took the deadline away. Well, the deadline's back now, so all the applications have to be turned in by March 1st if they're going into grades one to 12, and by September 1st for students that are entering kindergarten. The acceptance is based on program or space availability. Open enrollment is to a district, not to a school. Applicants can suggest a school, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there's gonna be space in that school or a specific program. We can't deny an application if there is space in the school or the program. So that's where I feel like the clarification needs to be because of the suggestion that we reduce it. And the only way to reduce it is by to reduce the number of seats we have, which could mean releasing teachers where we don't wanna do something like that. Applications, if they are accepted, there's an athletic eligibility rule where kids to participate in varsity athletics cannot do so for 90 days. There's a process that a waiver could be submitted and that would be reviewed by the superintendent and the athletic director, whether or not we recommend to the board, and then it would be up to the board to approve or deny that. New this year, the receiving district can terminate open enrollment for students who have 20% or more truant days, and that would also prohibit them from re-enrolling. So if someone was truant 20% or more right now and we brought to the board and asked to remove that open enrollment, they would not be allowed to reapply for open enrollment for that student. There's no transportation provided for open enrolled students. And there's a thing called continuation you'll see in the board packet each time we meet. That is for students who live in the district but maybe moved, say, to West Des Moines, and now they're in that school district. They apply for open enrollment, it's called a continuation. We do not decline continuations. They were our student and they're just asking to stay to be our student who's already being served. So we don't decline those. And finally, just to give you a perspective on what our open enrollment is. Certified this year, we have 200, now there's a decimal, I'm just gonna round it because we know we don't have partial people, but these are weights for individual students. But our open enrolled students leaving the district is 282. Our open enrolled students coming into the district is 807. So we're, since I've been here, on the positive side of the number of open enrolled students. If you were to take that balance of a positive 525 kids and apply the annual allocation from the state, that's over $4 million. So if we were to say we don't wanna take open enrollment, that's a lot of money to lose. And these are not kids that are gonna all come out of one school or one classroom. So we would be seriously cutting positions and services in the district. So I just felt like a perspective of that was important. We did a board development on open enrollment a couple of years ago and Carrie was still here. So I just felt like that was an update that was important. The second part is an update on the CIML. There's been a number of public comments around the CIML. And what I felt was necessary at this point, and this is the first opportunity I've had to be able to update you, this is a project that we have been working on since the summer. What I need people to understand is that this is not just an Urbandale question. And I value the relationship that I have with my board where I keep you posted and in the know where I am able to, but I also respect that for other boards. And there were other school districts that were a part of some of these conversations, and it was not my place to come out and divulge information that might have fractured a relationship between those superintendents and their board and their community because nobody wants to be blindsided by that. Well, some of the dust has settled in those confidential conversations, and I will tell you that Urbandale was invited at the end of the month to go and hear from the little Hawkeye about their possible expansion plans. There's not been anything formally extended to us. This is simply an informational meeting for us to come and hear about it. There are other districts that I am obviously not at liberty to divulge. That's between them and their boards. And whether or not they'll go is their choice. So if something, when something happens to be formally given to the district, Josh, Jared Power, Tim Carver, and myself will be attending that meeting. And should anything be offered formally, that will be brought back to the board and the board will, depending on what it is, make a decision or ask me to gather more information. So what you could do for me is to tell me what other information you want me to bring back, or you can wait until we find out what's gonna happen and then I can update you at that point and then you could decide. We've had a couple of surveys, we've had, you've gotten a few emails, you've gotten some input from the community. So I don't know if you know what you want additionally at this point or if you wanna wait until the February meeting to tell me what you are looking for. So those are the, those are the two pieces on the more you know. Do you have any questions on those?
I have one, or two actually. Just how would the open enrollment capacity figured out? So do we take, like, we have 15 classrooms with X number of students and that's how many spaces we have for each grade level?
Well, the board passes each spring. Stephanie will bring to you this spring a recommendation for her open enrollment caps. So we know if you have four teachers at a grade level and 25 kids could be in the class, that's 100 kids. She'll ask for a lower cap than that because we don't wanna fill every seat with an open enrolled kid because we have kids that move in. This year, we did have an anomaly where, for example, at Olmstead, we had five fifth grade families move in in a day. That's never happened before and that was not expected. So we are looking a lot more closely at those numbers. And remember, we had a little bit of personnel change over the time, so we wanna be able to study that. We look at the trends of what has come up through the years and is there a bubble? Is there somewhere that we have to lower that number so that we don't go over the amount? Because the, the negative part of it is that if you open enroll exceed at a grade, you might have to ask them, open enrolled kids, to move to a different school. And that's never desirable. It's happened, but it's not desirable to do. That's why I wanted to point out, you open enroll to a district, not a school. But we understand the value of continuing at a school where you've built relationships over the years. So that's a piece we have to watch really close. So I think March, I wanna say, is when we bring that.
I kind of remember from last year.
Yeah.
I was just making sure that was how it was figured out, that, you know, we have five seats here, six seats here, and we can, you know, have a little bit of playing room.
Yeah.
And then continuation, does that stay within a family too? Because I think that my family, our oldest daughter graduated, then our youngest came into kindergarten, even though we didn't live in district at the time. And then we were able to come into the thing, did it came with the family or is it all, will you try to do that or not?
No, continuation is who's here.
Okay.
And then if you were to move outside of the district, that student would be allowed to continue. If you have new students coming in, you'd have to apply and there would have to be space. We try to keep families together, but if there's just no space, then that's something that we have to ask the family to make a decision.
Yeah, because like we started in district and moved out of district. We moved across the street to be in Johnston. And then we open enrolled, then Lynn opened enrolled through here. And then Katie came into kindergarten after Lynn had graduated, but they still allowed us, even though we lived over there, to open enroll in. And then that's how we ended up.
As a kindergartner, we, it's a little easier to open enroll in kindergarten because that's where we get a lot of our original open enrolled students.
Okay, okay, that was, that's interesting.
I just think too, one of the most interesting things about our district that's very unique is how many districts. I think the reason we have this gain of open enrollment is because, you know, I think of like Jason's neighborhood, a street over and you're West Des Moines. You know, we have, within the city limits of Urbandale, we have so many different school districts, over five districts. And I think that makes it a very unique situation for us. It's a gain for us because we have gained a lot of students from that, but they're very much Urbandale kids.
Yeah.
And I think that's important to keep in mind too. You know, for those of you that haven't seen that in your element, you know, Olmstead maybe doesn't have that as much, but I know Valerius does and Webster with, you know, Waki and Dallas Center Grimes. There's, there's just so many districts within the city limits of Urbandale.
And you could actually play with the kids across the street and go to two different school districts, depending on where you live, which is, I think, very different.
Right. We don't know what that school board years ago decided.
And also Rosalie, thank you so much for all the work on the CIML stuff. I know that that's been a giant headache and there's been a lot of people asking a lot of questions that we couldn't talk about, but thank you for keeping us, the board, informed on what's going on so that, you know, we, we understand the processes and hopefully the public will be able to see everything that's happened in the past.
I know we don't answer to public comment, but I, I felt like now that there's a step that we could at least tell where we've been. And it, it's hard when you can't talk about it.
Right.
Because I, I didn't wanna compromise other districts. So I hope that other districts would feel the same if, if it was reversed, and I'm pretty sure they would, so. I don't think there's any questions that we could legitimately ask you unless we had facts. Okay, so I'll just bring back whatever it is they give us and then you guys can let me know what you need from that.
I, I do think when you come back and present to us, for the benefit of the community, I think a reminder of what a transition would look like in terms of when do we notify our current conference? When would this take effect and those types of things so that we can make sure that people understand that there's, there may be, this isn't going to be the next day.
Right.
We're now competing with the different schedules.
Right, that's, that's a really good point. It could be a year to two years from what I was told. I'll find out definitively, but it's, it's not a, if you said February, whatever that first meeting is, yes, let's, let's go, it, it still wouldn't be next year. So that's a good point. I'll make sure that I bring that information back to you. Okay, so the last thing under the superintendent report, I have provided you, I think we've had some of this data prior, but I just put it all together on the cell phone survey. We did have a student survey. It was delayed a little bit because I had to get permission from parents to make sure that a sixth through 12th grade student had permission to actually take the survey. And I got 366 students through their parents gave me permission to survey them. And out of that 366, 138 responded. So that's the data that you have linked in the agenda. At this point, I'm not asking you to do anything with it yet, I'm asking you to take a look at it. I do wanna get with the students at the high school. I'll have to come over and visit with you guys so I can have you bring me up to speed on where you guys are with your work that's happening. I don't know that the middle school has any work like that going on, but I wanna be able to compare notes so that you guys can tell me where you want us to go from here. Is there additional information that you need or do you have what you need to have? Do we need to put a group together to take a look at that data? I know legislation is getting ready to come into play. We don't know what is gonna happen in that respect. We do have the policy at the high school, we have the policy at the middle school. So getting a pulse on how those two things are going is probably, in my opinion, the next best step. And we've had almost a semester, next Friday's the end of the semester. So I think that would be a good time to get the pulse on how that's working. Did you have any questions or suggestions in the meantime?
Do you, I mean, would it be helpful, like, I just, I pulled some themes of, from comments. Would that be, would this be a helpful time to share that or?
Sure.
Just, I, from the students' comments, one of the things that stood out to me that I heard several different times was different expectations at different ages. And, you know, obviously our seniors who are 18 are close to the freedom of, you know, being adults. And do we need to consider looking at that differently? The, the difference between classroom time and passing lunch, and I think, I think that, that came through. I was very impressed with some of the student survey results in their acknowledgement of the anxiety that phones can create for themselves. I was, it was interesting to see that through several comments. It, themes that I saw in the teacher comments is the, the need to be enforced consistently. And I think that's where I think the most work needs to happen in, in getting the teachers on the same page because I think it will then translate to students if, you know, and that, that just seemed to come right through. And, and then the controls on the Chromebooks. Because I think a lot of them, we're kind of seeing, phones are out of the classroom now, so what's happening here? Is that the new, the new problem that was maybe created or the new situation? Those just stood out to me as I, as I read through those things.
I think the controls on the Chromebook is a, is a great point, and that's actually something that my team talked about as recently as today on how that has shifted. So that brings up a lot of other questions, and I think some, I know Krista at one point brought up a question and some others about how much technology do the kids need in general? Is it just the phones or is it beyond that? So that's a lot of conversation that needs to happen and a lot of, I won't say research, but a lot of observation and gathering some more information on our side from what's actually happening in the classroom with some of those devices. So that's a, I think that's a good point.
And I don't know how we could find this out, but like some of them, some of the students said quite clearly like, well, some, some classrooms, it's handled really well. Like, I'd like to know what, whose classrooms those are. What are they doing? Like, I don't know how we would go back and get those names, but maybe that's something the student committee could, you know, if there's certain teachers that stand out as, it just isn't an issue in these classrooms. And maybe it's the content and that's why it's less of an issue than other areas. So it could, it could be that as a factor, but I think we have to, I think we need to use the resources that we have and we have some amazing teachers doing great things and so.
I think it's a good conversation for you guys to have with the administrative team on what you can do to replicate where it's working well.
We have been working on that and hoping to get something by next semester.
I think along those lines, when I went to the, the session, the IASB about it, Dallas Center Grimes, they've had success with it. And one thing they said that they had a lot, made a big difference was, they added zero tolerance policy throughout the whole school. And the teacher had zero input, like if you, you have your phone out, you go directly to the principal's office. And that way, one person is making all the punishments. And just, you know, maybe talk to, reach out to them and see how that, how their structure, you know, this was a short session, but how their structure works internally. Because, you know, that seemed like that would be a big load to send to the office. But they said it hasn't been that, you know, so maybe you see what they're, how it's working for them and how they're, how they're doing it.
I think there's always gonna be exceptions. We have medically fragile students who need access to their phone. We have some kids with other valid concerns that are, and, you know, we don't wanna bucket everybody and maybe that gets to the different expectations, like where do you, where do you need to, to do that? So I think, I like the fact that the teachers own their own environment in their class, but.
I, I think it was, it wasn't that if anybody saw them, they used to send them to the offices. If the teacher deemed it a time, you know, a violation, that they, instead of them doling out the punishment, then you have five different teachers giving five different punishments where you just send them to the office and that's it. And that way, the teacher don't have to worry about it.
Okay, that's my report.
Okey dokey. On to the student representatives.
So end of semester is soon. Classes are wrapping up and since freshman year, we haven't had finals at all. So I think that, I don't know, this time is just a really good time for people to wrap up any outstanding projects or missing work. So it's really just a great time to get stuff done at the end of the semester. And it's a system that's working very well, so that's very much appreciated. Oh yeah, winter formal. So there was the freezing rain again, which was not optimal. We weren't able to set up in the morning, which was unfortunate, but we were dedicated to having the event just so we wouldn't have to cancel anything last minute, and we did. And it was fun. I went, it was a great time overall.
Yes, and then heading over, because I know all the surveys just came out for the phone. And as one part of the device committee, I will say, looking at the results from both the parent and the student as well as the teachers, they are pretty much as what I'm seeing across the building. Students are saying that they're a distraction from learning and that they do know the current policies, but the policies are just not being enforced. And as a student and as a part of the committee, like committee, we have realized that although some teachers are enforcing it, it's just not a uniform enforcement across the whole building. So the device committee is coming up with a, it's not the policy, because this is the policy, but just a way to enforce how to put away phones during instruction time. And we're hoping by next semester that we will have something. Of course, everything is gonna be dictated by, of course, the board and legislation. Like, it might all change, but as of now, that is what we're looking at. Also, as well as, I know it was mentioned about how, what to do if a student is caught with the phone, and that is also something we have addressed as a committee. And looking at the surveys, it's the same as what we have been saying is that if a student is caught with the phone, for the phone to either be taken or the student to be sent down to the office. Now, of course, it's deciding which one, we haven't reached that yet, but that is what we're leaning towards. And by looking at that, the surveys, most students agree that that is the best way to handle that situation. So we have made great progress and we continue to push for more progress to be made to hopefully make it so that phones are not in instructions at all and that students are aware of that and are following those rules.
That's it for us today. Awesome. Thank you. And on to the presentations, the employee handbook.
Lauren DeKrae, Director of HR and Operations.
Kate Johnson, Inter specialist.
And in regards to this item, we don't really have a formal presentation to go with this, but obviously a lot of information was included, what we attached. What I would say is that while there has been a handbook previously, it was, we are happy to, at this point, update in conjunction with all of the board policy that was updated in the last few years, which was our goal. The, I think the other goal that we've had, that we continue to have is just clarity of expectations for all of our employees. During orientation, we always talk about the ability for our new employees to know what it is that their, their expectations are both globally and, and down to the very small details. And while board policy does provide that, certainly in detail, this, the goal here, and Kate put a ton of work into putting this all together and connecting it to our board policy, was to connect those two things in language that's a little easier to read and understand. And then connect all of that to the different ways that we onboard new employees with the hopes being that all of it can ultimately help us to retain. I think if there's, there's one thing that we know in, in this age of continued full employment and the ability to retain is that our best recruitment is our retention. And, and having an updated employee handbook connected to board policy will certainly be helpful for us in that, in that regard. Any like that?
No, I think I'm good. Yeah, it's something that's been asked about for a while, so we are just really excited to have it connected to the board policies. There's links in there and making it easy and convenient. We know the board policies can be overwhelming, especially for employees. And so this is hopefully an easier way for them to see their expectations and bring clarity to them.
Any questions?
How is this provided to your staff?
So there'll be digital links throughout, like on the website and through what we provide on the initial onboarding and just access to that. And then what we do already is to talk about some of the highlights or the key things that all employees need to hear when we first start. We do not go through every single thing and it would simply take too much time and be even more overwhelming during onboarding. But the goal is to make sure that everybody knows where to access it and the key components for employees, which, while most of it is located in the 400 series, there are other things that, depending on what your job is, where you're gonna look other places to. Administrators, for instance, have to be familiar with really all of board policy as it relates to buildings and the work that they do.
We're also in the process of developing the internet, so we live there. And then each year, we have annual acknowledgements that we have our teachers and all of our staff sign off on, on confidential agreement, et cetera. And so the handbook will be provided with that too as a reminder for them.
I applaud your work on this. I know, you know, from participating periodically in the new teacher orientation, having a week of solid information thrown at you. It is, and it is difficult to sort through, okay, what do I absolutely have to do? And so having those links accessible, I think, is really good. And I think it's really good for the new mentoring program, that people will know where to find those things in case things come up and take care of it at the lowest level. So I appreciate your work.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point because that's just another aspect of, of through a different system, trying to do the best we can to bring new folks onboard, especially young educators in that case, and help them be successful as much as we possibly can.
Is that gonna be part of the new web design? I know we're working on a new, like, will there be a, a special spot for employees? Like, will it be LinkedIn there?
Yeah, there'll be internet.
Okay, yeah, perfectly, yeah, perfect. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you.
They're gonna remain.
Yeah, they're in there. So we also wanted to talk to you today about a switch that we're looking to make and, and to seek more approval on this. For many years, we've utilized AEA for online or mandatory online training. We use them online, but they're mandatory trainings. We saw this other entity and have looked at it extensively. And honestly, there's some of our partners that are, are neighbors that are using this. I've been slowed out here. So I'll just use our PowerPoint here. So one of the things we've done is connect with Heartland AA, which has been very good. And, and this, this certainly isn't about, you know, some major problem that we have necessarily with those trainings, but it's, it's looking at some of the other benefits that we might get. But, so we have had, we download certificates and, and folks do their mandatory trainings. We have timelines around that. And that's how we've done it, done things in the past. This is what we're thinking about moving forward, so it's a company called Vector Solutions. It is very similar, but yet it's more extensive. So there's an online catalog that they have that includes a variety of subjects. And that probably is one thing that's a little different. Um there's access to other types of trainings beyond our mandatory trainings that uh we would be interested in, things like uh specific trainings uh for special education uh employees. Um there is, uh and we have to do more, you know, more detailed investigation, but another aspect could be some training around in the areas of custodial and maintenance, um and things to help with preventative maintenance. And then there's a lot of other things as well that we potentially could utilize by using this beyond our mandatory trainings. Like I mentioned a little bit ago, um a lot of the districts around us are, are already using Vector Solutions and one of the things we see and what also made us think about this was um for those employ- former employees of other places that come here or that worked other places and come here, uh familiarity with that system as well as some that especially our, a lot of our mid-year hires have already taken the trainings. Um and it's already housed in that um that clearinghouse of uh where you would, we would keep information. Another aspect of it is that there is, uh we have a partnership with EMC Insurance. Um there is a significant discount to this platform based on our, us being insured uh partially with EMC uh which, which uh means that it is somewhat more affordable um than uh if we didn't have that relationship. Um so one of the thing, other things we would do is that it's uh gives us the ability to sign into the system more easily, allowing trainings to be completed in a timely manner. Uh it's one of the things that we think about continually and trying to allow our employees to be able to do it while they're at work uh and give them time to do that. Um we also would be able to see employees' trainings uh to completion and for our supervisors to be able to see what's done and what's not done. Um because compliance is certainly an, uh one of the things that's important about this. And then I already mentioned that surrounding districts are utilizing Vector Solutions. Kate, what would you add about what we know?
Yeah, I think um, I think many employees would probably say right now that it's the practice of the trainings can get to be kind of complicated. We do take the trainings in the AEA system and then we upload the certificates to records, the supervisors can see it. And while it's great to have everything online, it's just one more step and um this should all be in one platform. So supervisors could see it, it'd be easy to be able to get our employees signed in when we talked about hopefully a single sign-on, make it easy for them for passwords and whatnot. Um I find it with most, many of the districts around us using it, our substitute teachers also are already doing trainings in other districts and coming here. So just the consistency would be really helpful as well.
What questions do any of you have? I know one, I know one was the financial commitment that we've had prior to now. Um AEA was just under two thousand dollars on the per student cost, so this is a little bit more expensive than that, but I would say that it does give us a more comprehensive platform as well as um access to a greater catalog, I believe. Uh plus the other things that I've mentioned, but AEA's um cost was a little bit cheaper than what this is. And we also anticipate just a lot of, like a lot of the software that we utilize, that there will be yearly increases in costs, but I think it's gonna be pretty typical to what we see, two to three percent um that's built in to a lot of these systems that we use.
So is it, is a certificate not transferable? If I take mandatory reporting at AEA, that it would be a different, I'd have, if I came on here, I'd have to take a different training?
So if it's the same training, I do that, um I do accept it if it's getting the same bloodborne pathogens or whatnot. Um but it is a confusing thing sometimes for substitute teachers, just with, sometimes I do end up taking all the trainings and whatnot.
Where they're titled different?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And the automatic renewal is just in perpetuity until you notify for cancellation, is that?
I think that's accurate, yes, yeah.
There's probably another variable with the AEA since we, I'm not sure how things are going there as far as consistent, you know, in the future, that particular offering. I mean, I, I'm not happy about that, but that's the reality right now. And um you know, having been in this for many, many years, just having these online was a remarkable improvement for those of us who were around. So, yeah, but it continues to evolve, so it's good.
And I think from my personal experience, I have to try, keep track for, in my business experience, have to keep track of our, I'm the compliance officer for our company, so we have to keep track of all the trainings. And recently, they went to a system like this where everything is all done through one portal. And the amount of time it saves me as a compliance officer, being able to just click and see who's done it, who hasn't done it versus having to go through and have a file with everybody's name and check for each certificate and it makes a world of difference and you can't hardly put a price on that type of help it, that this offers.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment tonight, so we'll move on to the at-risk dropout.
Um the administration is asking for um approval for the modified supplement in the amount of one million, three fifty-two, eight forty-one. This is um the SBRC for spending authority for the at-risk programming at this time. Any questions? Yeah, it's, it's common. This is the over expenses of things within the program because of the, the students that we have in the district, so without it, we would, it would be tight to fit this in.
So we're taking part of the money, we can do what we please with within the district and moving it and bringing the authority to move it towards these programs?
We, we need the authority in order to, to spend that additional money.
Okay.
It, it's a category.
It's a categorical, yeah, it's basically categorical, that we, we overspend some money in the at-risk and dropout. And in order to recoup those, we ask for the spending authority to the SBRC to have that.
This happens every year.
Yeah, every year. Most years it goes up.
Well, you know, you never, you never, you never know how many people you're gonna have in that programming.
Nope.
Or what their needs are gonna be, so it has to be that way.
Which Ms. Davis will talk about that going forward on the next piece.
Okay.
Thank you.
This one is a vote.
Yeah, this is a vote.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, this one's a vote.
Yes, so.
Please.
Motion.
I would move to approve uh the SBRC application for at-risk.
Williams will second.
That's a roll call.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Nanki?
Yes.
And Rice White?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
On to the budget piece.
You're driving.
Okay, sounds good. Um Stephanie Davis, Director of Student Services at Quinney. Um I am here this evening to walk us through a little bit of what our at-risk program looked like last school year. So we are about halfway through our current school year, but this is a full report um from our previous school year. Traditionally, that's when um this has been reported in the past. So when thinking of at-risk, it's any student who's, who needs additional support and who is not needing or not expected to be the established goals of the educational program, whether academic, personal, social, or career vocational. Um and it does include our students who are experiencing homelessness, uh dropouts, returning dropouts, and potential dropouts. So when we think of the definition from the law of what potential dropouts are, they meet two or more of the following. So they could be um demonstrating a high rate of absenteeism, truancy, or frequent tardiness, a lack of connectedness to school. Um it could be the lack of connectedness may demonstrate itself with limited or no extracurricular participation or lack of identification with school, including but not limited to expressed feelings of not belonging. Um it could also include poor or failing grades, and that could be failing one class or the entire grade level and achievement scores two or more years below grade level in reading or mathematics as measured through standardized assessments. So our at-risk program report, we do provide this annually in conjunction with the budget presentation, with a budget approval and provides data about each of the programs that are supported through this funding. Um includes our staffing level, the purpose of the program, the number of students served, and all of our results and outcomes as well. And we approved the, well, you approved, I was here, um you approved the handbook for at-risk this i- in September of this year. So some of the highlights of the report, um we maintained high levels of four-year graduates. Um earlier this year, you saw a presentation from IJAG and um we have continued to expand that program through last year and additionally continued expansion this year. Um we have an increased number of students served by our FFOs. And we did have a change in the structure of how we offer support with our fa- uh facilitators of family outreach um at the elementary level. Last year, when this report is from, um we had a shared FFO between Karen Akers and Webster and Valerius and Olmstead each had their own. This current school year, Valerius and Olmstead have a shared FFO um and Karen Akers and Webster each have their own. The reason for that change was, as you know, we added additional counseling support at our largest elementaries, and so that led to additional support for our students in different ways with the way that we're looking at our FFO structure. Um continued format of our Jayhawks up on the way, the, in the, in um introduction to middle school for many of our students. Um we have more students who are u- utilizing our credit recovery and increase the success of earning credit through credit recovery. And then more students took advantage of online learning through Edmentum Ed Options Academy. We did switch last school year the program that we were using, we had been using Net High Academy and have gone to Edmentum for our, for both credit recovery and for students who elect to learn virtually. Um and that has been a very successful change. Some of the things we are continuing to work on, we're continuing our current programming. As you know, we've um had a lot of work around chronic absenteeism compliance, but also looking at some of the ways that we are working with our schools, with our families, um reducing chronic absenteeism um in order to make sure that students are finding success. Um and then continue to examine our continuum of services and programming. As you know, I'm new to the role this year, and so it's been a wonderful experience to learn so much about um the positive things that are happening with our at-risk and dropout prevention program. Uh one of the questions that I know came up was about the increased number of our Jayhawk diploma. Um and I would say that cl- the class that graduated last year were eighth graders. I can't say this for sure, if this would be the reason, this would be one thing that might impact it. They were eighth graders when the pandemic hit. So when they started high school as freshmen, it was in that on-again, off-again um kind of uncomfortable time. So I, I suspect that that may have impacted their high school experience in some way. And it's wonderful that we have the opportunity for students to demonstrate their learning and earn a diploma, even in situations that, as we know, are particularly difficult. Another question came up about our number of students who are experiencing homelessness. Um our students, or families can report that during the registration process. Um additionally, as family, as we become aware of it during the course of the year, our FFOs work very closely with our families that are experiencing homelessness. Um in order to provide resources, they check in with students every month um and making sure that we continue to follow up with, with what each student needs. Um an additional question that came up was about the difference between Oasis and our high school numbers. Um Oasis is our middle school program that serves our at-risk students. Um there's a mu- big difference in between the needs at middle school and the needs at high school. Um at this ti- point in time with so much credit recovery work going on and one-on wor- one work at our high school, that's why our ratios are different in those two spaces. We know that middle schoolers are not necessarily going to become credit deficient because they will, don't earn credits until high school, but they have a different set of needs in order to make sure they're getting support along the way. And one additional question about our improved attendance, um any student improvement whatsoever. The, the um percentage that was cited was from our um family outreach and facilitators of family outreach working with students. Um not all of the students that the FFOs work with have an attendance goal. And so while we may be looking at the total population, um any improvement at all is considered an improvement in attendance. Any additional questions?
I have one.
Oh, sure.
Um in the second attachment that you have, gave us the results and the outcomes in the first section. This says like eighteen percent of students improve their daily attendance average. Do we have goals for these? Like, you know, are we shooting for fifty percent? I know we're all shooting for a hundred percent, but realistically, are there goals to track on how, what we're doing rather than just these numbers kind of out there?
In this particular case, when we're, we're looking at students who are working with our FFOs, it would be any and all uh improvement whatsoever for that student. Not every student who's working with an FFO has an attendance goal that we're working on. Um separately, when we're looking at chronic absenteeism overall or our chronic absenteeism compliance, um that aligns with our um, with our district plan, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to lower the amount of chronic absenteeism. In this case, it's, it's related, but not exactly the same.
But even like on the other things, like the twenty percent, seven percent of students attended at least one peer race, peer-based program. Um you know, are we looking to try to raise that like a hundred, fifty percent or seventy percent we're trying to reach? Or is it just we're gonna take whatever we can get?
Many of the needs of the students are so varied, it's hard to say that I need every, I want every single student to go through this type of an intervention, and we wanna make sure that we're matching the interventions to the needs and the appropriateness for each student. Um the, in this, as we're looking at this for right now, it's a matter of where are we and then we can continue to look at goals going forward. Um but as this is my first report that we're doing.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Just at this point, getting the baseline and understanding um what we're looking at.
So like we haven't historically tracked these numbers and types?
As far as setting a goal, it, it's mostly just reporting out on, on our success for the year. And it gives us an idea of ways we can grow in the future.
If I, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, i- it's, but it's really because every student i- in this program has very individual needs, so it would be hard to say, like if, if attendance isn't my concern, I'm not gonna help that number because that's not what we're concerned about for me. It's my engagement with other activities. Does that, I mean, I?
Yeah, I guess the re- the reasoning behind this is I was talking to my wife about this, because this is what she does for DMPS. They have goals of like to improve the attendance by forty percent or to improve, have more outreach and improve participation in these things, that that's how they track what, how well they're doing.
Okay.
So that's why I was just curious if we had those, that type of tracking, because by just taking these raw numbers, we never know if we're, you know, if we set a goal or something, we don't know. It's just, okay, this month, yours eighteen, then it was seventeen, then it was forty-three, then it was six, you know, there is no
Okay.
what we're shooting for uh at a goal, you know?
It's almost like you need a third number in there. And that's like of those four hundred and sixty-four students, what percent needed help with attendance? And if it was eighteen percent needed help and you reached eighteen percent, then that's great.
Right, yes.
So i- is that what you're getting at?
Yes, that would be, that would be things much more clear for sure.
And that will come as you have done this more. You just, it's the baseline, like you said.
I don't, I hate to put you on the spot, but there's a legal definition of homelessness that covers a lot more than not necessarily having a home, at least historically. Could you explain what fits in that category?
Yes, I don't have it all top of my mind.
I don't either, but I just know there was more to it.
Yes, there's, there's addition, uh several additional options when we're uh talking about students who are experiencing homelessness. It might be um that they're living at a hotel or motel, they might be um doubled up with another family. Um I'm, I'm missing the additional five items that are there that I'm reading in my head right now. Um but there's, that is part of our questionnaire in each um registration form, so as we have new families coming in. And those would be some of the um questions that our FFOs would, would ask the families. Um we've provide, um students who are experiencing homelessness, um we provide transportation for them. Um they're able to uh receive free or, well, free meals through school. Um additionally, um we have students who are migrant within the district. Um and so there's questionnaires for that, whether they've moved recently, whether they're working in um certain um careers, whether it's agriculture, meatpacking, or a few other items. So So those are defined by state and federal guidelines. And so families have the opportunity to give those responses, and then we match them with the services that they may need.
Good, because that kind of covers a wide range of family issues that the kids have no control of. And so, thank you.
Do we have a population of migratory workers? Also, my wife and I were just talking about this, so that's why I wondered.
We, we do, I cannot give you.
I don't, I'm not putting you on the spot for a number.
No, I can't give you the number because I couldn't remember how to look it up, and I needed more. I'm gonna be completely honest, I know where to go, and then I got stuck. But the, for migrant workers, it's whether the families are, have moved within the last three years, and if anyone has been involved in the following positions, whether agriculture, planting, growing, de-tasseling, or farm labor, processing, packing agricultural products, dairy, poultry, egg, or livestock, meatpacking, meat processing, or fishing, or fish farms. That I had handy.
Do we, do we have a sizable population or not, or is that just, you know, like, five for ten or?
We, we have a population, and it would, if I were reporting out with numbers, I would have to say that our population is too low for me to report.
Okay.
That we know of?
Yes.
Because some of the ways, particularly at the elementary, some of the ways that these conditions arise are through the FFOs, or the teachers, or, so the outreach is so varied, and the way those needs come up. And that I, I think to your question about a number set arbitrarily, I, I wish it were more preventive, but I, it isn't. Because they come in, and they have these needs, and particularly with the littles.
And I, I'm very grateful for our FFOs and the work that they do with our families who are experiencing homelessness. They are right in the front of working with families and making sure that they have what they need, and providing different options for the families, connecting them with a lot of the social services available through the state as well. So I'm very grateful for the work that they do.
Stephanie, is there any way for the community to help? I hear that, and I want to give in some way. Do you know of any ways that the community could be involved and support these families?
I know that we've had a great number of community partners help to donate to some of our holiday events. The FFOs have clothing drives occasionally for our families. Each, if you ever venture into one of our elementaries, do walk back to that closet where the FFOs have all the snow boots and snow pants and everything organized. I probably need some help in the organization from them, because they have done an amazing job with that. But we do have a lot of community partners who donate different things that families may need. They can certainly reach out to me or to the FFOs. If there's a family that has a particular need, often we are able to make those connections.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, if you have a connection with UCAN and a lot of these services, the Urbanel Food Pantry, I'm sure is used extensively by those families, so.
And last question, I promise, I just looked up and I saw it. The chronic absenteeism compliance, I know that that's been a lot more. How is that going for us? Is it budget-wise and time-wise, is it taking? I know it's costing more because of all the mailing that we're having to do, but how is that going, I guess?
We need to be an agenda item to discuss it more in detail. We can put that on the next agenda if the board officers.
Okay.
I think catching up with it perhaps at the semester with data, and maybe costs. I know each certified letter costs eleven dollars. And there, by all accounts, there are a lot going out across the state. I think an assessment on how we might perceive the success of that program might not be bad. I think that's part of our responsibility to public. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
I vote Stephanie did a good job.
I move to approve the at-risk group budget.
William's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and on to the maintenance team restructure.
So while they're making their way up, we have Zach Wheeler here tonight with Lauren. This is a request that Zach can answer more of the details about. But as you know, we've brought to you before when we've had positions vacated, that we take a look at those positions to determine, we've been doing this for a long time, is this the most effective and efficient way to operate? And in some conversations with Zach, he had some, I think, good ideas on how his department could operate more effectively and efficiently. So that's what we're bringing, bringing to you tonight. And basically, we had a one-point-oh position that he shared with, well, it was all under Zach, but a portion of that work was the delivery of mail and bank deposits. So what we're asking is that position for him to keep the one-point-oh, but to turn it into an administrative assistant, and then that half of a position to go under Steve. So it's an addition of a half, and that's the calculations that were in there. But I'll let you talk to Zach about why he feels that that's a more efficient way for his department to run.
Yeah, Zach Wheeler, Building and Grounds Coordinator. With the opening of this position, just kind of brainstorming with Lauren here on how we could make the, made his department more efficient, what we could do to kind of just up our, up our game to get things the way that I think they should be, and we can make them be that way. So just kind of discussing with him some of the options. We came up with having a miss administrative assistant to kind of help with, kind of listing, if you look in the job description, whole list of things that they, this position could help with. You just think of an example, the day I was up with the HVAC technician, all the rough working on a HVAC unit, multiple phone calls, one was for an elevator, not working at Olmstead. I think this position could be a great resource. Take that phone call, get, get a technician to that school faster than me not answering my phone for a couple hours as, as we're trying to get the heat working at the gym at the high school. Also, with just kind of any administrative assistant, just kind of helping us get organized, kind of with, let's say, one example, safety data sheets. To be honest, we're kind of lacking with organization on that right now. Kind of just gets pushed to the back burner with everything else we got going on. Just financial things, budgeting questions, a whole list of things I think this position would really help. I'm not sure if it mentions in there, also gonna support the technology department as well. So I think it would help with talking with Josh with the IT department, a lot of data entry and a lot of stuff that I think can just help his department run more efficient also.
I think we talked earlier about like the quotes for the demolition of the houses. Zach's out in the field, he can't make all these calls and send out all these documents. But if he had an assistant that he could show how to do that, that person could do it, and then he's not tied to his desk, because he can't get work done at his desk, because air conditioners are outside. So I think that's, I like the idea for that reason, because right now, he's being expected to do all of that, and I don't know that that's a fair expectation for him.
Yeah, and, and I think too, the, another aspect that we've thought about is just having somebody that's local there. While we have currently our admin assistant here supporting operations overall, it's totally different being here and trying to support from afar than I think it would be being local and doing some of the things in real time that Zach is talking about, as well as supporting IT a little bit too. Another way to think about it is the, we have a lot of really, really good administrative support for a lot of our other departments, and it's essential. And they're performing a lot of the same generalized tasks that we have listed in this job description, just in different ways for the details and specifics that are needed in those departments. This isn't a whole lot different from that, to provide as comprehensive a service as we possibly can, both with the fact that we have new buildings and the potential of what will be coming in the next ten to twenty years as well. And supporting all that work is there, it's possible, there could be other building that happens, which, which really pulls this team out even a little bit more.
And where would this person be housed?
So we've been examining different spaces at the high school, in the area, in the operations area, basically. It, we'll have to figure that out, you know, if the board approves, then we'll figure that out quickly so that it can be in a spot that is as efficient as possible in serving those that would need to connect to that position most.
So looking at the delivery driver job posting document, it says twelve-month position, four hours daily. This is a full-time position.
Well, that should be part-time.
Yes, definitely would be a part-time. And, and one of the things too, that would happen here is that that would become, or will become, much more of just mail delivery, and, and the maintenance team would be responsible for all other moves beyond that. So if it's a pallet of boxes, or whatever the case might be, we really would separate that out so that that mail person is really just consolidated to doing that job and doing that job well, which would be small packages to letters.
And we'll fix that before we post it. I didn't catch that either.
And, and the other, the other thing, which isn't listed here as much, but is certainly true, is that the support that, if we do, if we do this, the support for the HR department as well will be more comprehensive too, because of the ability for that person then to be able to focus fully on those, all those tasks. So that isn't the reason that this is happening, but would be a side byproduct that would be very helpful in, in our department.
And I would point out that we'd like to keep you.
We didn't write that down in there either, but. Did we, so?
Yes, because there've been a number of positions before you since I.
I will also say, my accounting or constable person made a comment the other day about Zach with the work that they're doing in their department, the requisitions are like, seem like they're double what they are, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's definitely a.
It doesn't surprise me that you're a little behind on paperwork.
Yeah, most definitely.
So this person will be shared between the three areas then?
It'd be between two areas.
Okay, but the IT part that was just, is considered under one of the.
It's under operations anyway.
Yeah, yeah. It, it would be closer in order to assist them, and we, we've had a discussion with Josh about a few of the, the things that this person in a full-time capacity could support. And it's along the same lines, it's inventory management, which is a big part for them, which would be helpful. And then just the purchase order process and invoices and working through that as well would be very similar to what is happening in operation, in Building and Grounds. We, we would have Zach be the supervisor of it overall, just because it would be more comprehensive to that spot than it would be tied to.
Okay, the reason I was asking, because like, I just was having to look at the posting. They both say, both the two administrative positions say they're both full times. So to me, I was just making sure that it wasn't, are they, should it be, should be a dual posting?
It says it's what?
Full time, eight hours a day?
The admin assistant is.
Okay, but there's two postings, there's one admin assistant for operations and an admin for human resources.
Yes, so right now, that position is shared. So what we're looking at is that position being full-time, and then this position remaining full-time. And that's why I said that there would be theoretically additional support that would happen for HR, and less additional for maintenance, because it's replacing a maintenance personnel. And that's why the, the financial thing, the financial example that was given there kind of states the, the overall financial impact, which is fairly low overall, based on what we currently have staffed versus what we're adding, which ends up being a point five.
And that is an update to the HR admin assistant, where those operational pieces were taken out. This is what it would look like.
Yes.
Because they'd be replacing it with more HR-related responsibility. So that's just an update, that's not another.
Okay, I thought, I was looking at that as a new position. So I, down below in the postings, I saw two and a half job postings.
We just clarified both of them, and actually, what we found over the time we've had this shared position is it probably is skewed more towards the operations side in that work. And that's why the, by, by doing this, it's going to help in numerous ways beyond what she's already doing. But then here as well, it will be a benefit, because more efforts have been going that direction already, if that makes any sense. And if you have a shared position, it's never gonna be fifty-fifty, and that has been the case here too.
Then it would be easier for you to have that person next door to you.
Correct, yes, much better, yeah. Because everybody right now, probably minus this position in the district, has very close access to their administrative assistants.
And the buildings.
Yeah, yep.
Zach's gonna drive out here if he needs to talk with her, which is, I mean, it's not that far, but if he's on a roof, that doesn't work well.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Zach, for keeping our students and teachers warm. Appreciate it.
I would move to approve the maintenance team restructure.
Yeah, one second. And this is all in favor?
Aye.
No, it's.
Yep.
Opposed?
Okay, I would move to bring forward the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Do we have any questions? Okay, I have a silly question. There was mowing on there.
You don't mow your yard in January?
I don't know, one's been mowing at my house, but there was.
I think that it was.
I wondered if it wasn't.
You have an old bill.
An old bill that came over, that was my guess, but I was like, it just seems funny to approve.
There's only one meeting in December, so what Denise does is gets my approval to pay the bills, and then puts it on.
But we were still mowing.
Yeah, we were at the time.
November.
Yeah.
And I figured it was a trickle one, but it just was kind of funny to approve mowing in January.
If you see that in February.
Yeah, then we got a problem.
Now, but casually, those bills just get missed in the mail or something like that.
Any other questions or discussions?
I'm not real crazy about the retirement on the addendum, I'll say that, but.
She's earned it though.
She has earned it, she absolutely has.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Ricewipe?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam President, I would offer a motion.
Your motion? One second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.